And yeah. We're gonna properly start our meeting. At this time, we'll stand for a moment of silence, silent press, however you see fit to use your time. Or to catch your breath like me. At this time, I ask Commissioner Shepherd to be present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, um, we'll have our, we'll have our roll call, please.
Good morning again, sir. Commissioner Vesterville Shepherd, Commissioner Isaac Owens.
Present.
Vice Chairman Jay Wesley Rainey.
Here.
Chairman Joshua Dier.
Alive and present, thank you, ma'am. All right. Do we have approval of today's agenda by the sound of a motion and a second?
Sound off.
Sound.
It's been properly moved a second that we approve today's agenda. All right. Out in favor, let me know in my voice, will I?
Aye.
And motion carries, agenda is approved. Do we have a motion and a second of approval of regular minute meetings?
Sound off, second.
It's been properly moved a second, August nineteenth, that we approve the regular minute meetings, all right. Out in favor, let me know in my voice, will I?
Aye.
All right. This time for announcements, um, if you have a cell phone, most people do, um, please go ahead and put it on silent or vibrate. If you, um, have the need to take a phone call, please step out those doors and away from the door so we won't hear your conversation. Sometimes I like to be noticed, but not this more. Um, um, secondly, this is a regular meeting, um, and commentary, comments, public comments will not be made unless we need someone in an honest way expert matter opinion or a level of experience that we need necessarily to help us inform as we deliberate on matters of business for this city. Those are the occasions and circumstances in which we'll, um, ask for a lot of people to speak on matters. I think this body can deem being a small community who's expert matter on these issues or what have you. So we'll go about that, all right? Um, thank you, Mr. Vester Remender. My brain is tired. Um. All right, with that, we have no speaker appearance signed up. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right. At this time, we'll have our community advancement manager, Mr. Hill, give us, uh, the report. First Tuesday report.
Good morning, everyone. Make it brief, um, on the twenty-fourth, I met with, um, the, uh, planning of the community development team and, uh, community advancement is now a part of that department. Uh, and we went over the department and operational goals and objectives as well as the workforces. On August twenty-fifth, we had a call meeting for Galbraith Intergovernmental Committee to introduce legislation that will allow land banks to forgive more debts other than just the taxes, things like trash bills, demolition, things like that, so I'll give update on that. Uh, we're supposed to introduce that in October at our summit. Uh, I have submitted a copy of the, uh, agreement with the USDX servicer to discuss the five oh two and the five oh four program. The city manager and I will, um, discuss that and then I'll bring that back to you whenever we have a final, um, decision on that. On September third tomorrow, we'll be meeting with the Orchard Developer along with some of the community stakeholders who wanted to discuss the needs for their employees, uh, relative to this subdivision. So we've set up a meeting here at City Hall. On the fourth of September, we will be meeting with, finally, meeting with the Georgia Film Academy over at, uh, Auburn State to discuss bringing video production classes to, uh, oh, film production, not video, but film production classes over to Auburn State. And then I had an opportunity to work with this gentleman before, a visitor. He's coming down the week of the twenty, of the fifteenth to discuss bringing AR and VR, um, training modules to the school district. So I've talked to the CTA director as well as the superintendent. Hopefully, all of us will be able to get together and bring, um, some AR VR twenty-first century learning opportunities to the kids here in Chris County. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Any questions for Mr. Hill? Just one with the Orchard subdivision?
Yes, sir.
You said that you're gonna be meeting with the home and lots size to accommodate their staff, uh, staff with?
Hospital and the superintendent. What happened when we were in a meeting, they said that the size of the lots that they were looking to present, they may, their staff may want something slightly different, so we decided to set up a meeting to have a discussion with them and, you know, try to accommodate people that are moving in.
Okay, all right, I got you. In the meeting scheduled with the, um, um, subdivision, September third, uh, what time?
Uh, at nine AM, just to be here in the, um, police department, um, conference.
That's tomorrow.
Yes, sir. We can do a larger meeting at a different time, this is somebody that has specifically to meet with, so that's why I said that.
Any other questions for Mr. Hill? Saying none, thank you, sir. Good morning, Ms. Alzada, how are you doing this morning?
Okay, sales tax collection for the month of August was four hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents. That's all I have. Nice and sweet.
All right, any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning.
How are you?
Doing well, how are y'all?
Good, good.
Um, these are calls for service, reporting period, uh, July twenty-ninth through August twenty-second, there were forty-seven calls for service. I've highlighted the cause of interest, um, grass and rubbish fires, there were three. There were sixteen calls for medical assist, two motor vehicle accidents, one car fire, one structure fire. We had three electrical calls, one gas leak and one vehicle fire. On department news, um, you may see us out and about, we're currently conducting our annual pre-fire plans. So that's within every business within city limits, so we're there not checking for violations. At this time, we're just going through, getting familiar with the layout of the building, uh, checking that our emergency contacts are still the same, just locating electrical and gas cutoffs and water supply. So we're just getting familiar with everything, we do this annually. We attended the Public Safety Roundtable at the EOC. Um, and then there's a couple of people I wanna recognize real quick. Um, first of all, Rico Howard, who's one of our new employees, been an excellent employee. He starts his ten-week firefighter one hazmat certification at Dib Stick. He'll start it on September the fifth and he'll be there for ten weeks, we wish him luck. Abby Patterson, um, actually was able to be a part of, uh, Fire Standards and Training Pilot Class. She's got her volunteer certification and so they're trying to do a fast track from volunteer to full-time certified. So she was able to attend the hazmat class through the Macon Bay Fire Department. They let her attend with some of her trainees, uh, their trainees. And then she passed the skills test with some outside assessors, so we're just waiting on her paperwork to get processed and she'll earn her certification as firefighter one. Justin Cook, we talked about Justin before about attending classes, but now he's actually got his certifications. Uh, he got his state fire safety, uh, inspector certification, which gives us two now in the department with Chief Bullington. And then he also got his state arson investigator certification, so now we can do that in-house whenever possible and, and not have to call the state for that. And then finally, uh, Lieutenant Jared Avril, who is our training officer. Uh, Lieutenant Avril applied for a grant through the Region Eight Regional Trauma Advisory Committee. Applied for some trauma and first aid kits and we were awarded the grant, we're getting ten of those kits. And part of that process, he had to submit, uh, just an overview of our calls and data as it applied to those type of calls. The state committee was so impressed that they actually asked him to serve on the board. So Lieutenant Avril will serve on the board for the Georgia Fall Prevention Committee and Regional Trauma Advisory Committee. They'll meet quarterly and what they're gonna do is that they're just gonna use real-world data and look at these emergencies and try to formulate ways to prevent these from happening in the future. So we wanna congratulate him on that. And then finally, Fire Safety Week, October fifth through the eleventh. Charging the fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home, wanna give you a little tip on that. And, and a lot of these are exactly the same in that it's very important with lithium batteries, uh, to use the certified charging device that they come with. Uh, follow the manufacturer's instructions, ensure the charger is plugged directly into a power outlet. Don't use extension cords, that's important. And then once the battery is fully charged, unplug the battery. So that's the tip for lithium ion battery charging. That's all I have.
Any questions?
One question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Only lithium ion battery. I think you're gonna plug the question to check it again, see if it's still charged.
Well, the advantage of a lithium ion battery is that they hold their charge much longer than typical batteries. They don't discharge, so you should have quite a bit of time before you would have to, um. It, it, it depends on the size of the battery, it depends on what it's powering, but it should be fine to get, to give you service and then you just plug it back in when you need to recharge it. I would, I would hesitate to say a time, I would say unplug it when it's full, use it when you need it and then plug it back in and recharge it when it's full and unplug it again.
It's based on usage, right?
It really is.
So like if you have drills or some people get electric.
I have one, I don't know what to do with that.
Okay, okay, yeah.
I got one on my birthday to give it a run.
Okay.
So if you're in my house and when you don't know, you ask questions.
Yeah, and what happens is a lot of people plug them in, charge them and forget about it. Well, they just take them and plug them forever and it'll probably never be a problem. But they can't overheat and when they do, that's a problem. So they advise just unplug them when it shows, the green light shows are fully charged, should be good to go. Thank you.
This is H R, Mr. Wade.
Sheriff, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
I have my report in your package, just gonna cover a few items over here. Um, first of all, this report is for the period of July the thirtieth through August twenty-sixth. On July the thirtieth, we conducted random drug screens in the gas department. And also on August the twenty-second, we conducted random drug screens in our DOT, covered employees. The results for the gas department had come back and they were all negative, we're still waiting on the DOT results to come back. On August the first, uh, completed and submitted the employer shared responsibility report for the twenty twenty-five Affordable Care Act filing. And on August the fourteenth, we completed and submitted the GMEF's Annual Plan Retirement Evaluation Census. During this reporting period, we've had several resignations, including animal control officer in the police department along with corporal in the police department and a firefighter in the fire department. However, during this time, we've also, uh, hired a records technician in the police department along with a police officer in the police department, a maintenance tech in public works. And we have a temporary employee who originally began assisting in the city clerk's office, she has since been moved and assisting in the finance department right now. And then lastly, for your information, just wanna remind you that we're still holding the HACC to learn on September the fifteenth at noon. It's gonna be in the police department training room, this is for understanding your retirement benefits. So if you would like to attend that, just letting you know, we still have some slots available. And that's all I have, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Wade? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Wade. All right, next up is Municipal Court. Good morning, Nancy.
Good, how you doing? Uh, we had a total of, uh, three hundred and fifteen traffic cases, thirty criminal cases, for a total of three hundred and forty-five cases. We had, um, eleven bench warrants, uh, forty-three license suspensions and between our cash bonds, fines and other deposits, we had forty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifteen cents.
Any questions for Municipal Court? Some questions, Nancy. And this is, since Ms. Darby isn't here.
I have heard of Ford, if you all wanna go take a look again.
You all.
You have me in your package.
You all like an update, a verbal update is fine for Ms. Darby.
Okay.
All right. More? More?
No.
Have more. Have more. Good morning, T G.
How it is? All right, I'll start with the police department, um.
I'm gonna be good for you this morning.
Yeah, the reporting period is, uh, July twenty-ninth through August twenty-fifth. Uh, Part One Crimes, forty-seven, we did have a reported, uh, rape that came off within that reporting period, uh, still under investigation. Motor vehicle thefts, we had one, that one vehicle was recovered. Aggravated assaults, we had a total of seven, on those seven, we had four arrests that were made as well as one warrant that was issued. Larcenies or thefts, we had a total of thirty-seven, twenty-two of those were entering, entering autos, we noticed a spike in entering autos. We, we normally notice it before school starts, normally also happens around Christmas time, so there's certain times when we noticed these spikes and we did have a spike. Um, there were five shopliftings with four adults and two juvenile arrests off of those five, uh, shoplifting cases. And there were ten other thefts. As far as burglaries, there was one, one of the, that one was residential. Part Two Crimes, you had a total of a hundred and twenty-nine, incidents reported a hundred and twenty-one. Community contacts, fifteen, with twenty-six arrests, thirty-five citations issued with thirty-eight warnings and a total of one thousand and eighty-four, uh, calls for service from dispatch. As far as departmental news, we currently have, uh, two applicants in the hiring process for patrol officers. We also interviewed six applicants for animal patrol officers, really encouraged, uh, to see the interest in those positions. Um, we also have two cadets that are currently in their eighth week of the police academy and they're doing very good. Uh, that, I believe it's driver training week, so that's another, that's a huge week, uh, in the academy, so pulling for them to make it through that. Uh, we also currently are accepting internal applications for the position of, of, for, uh, corporal assessment. We'll be holding those, uh, assessments very soon. And then the event committee, as we do, uh, every year for the last three years, are in the early stages of planning for the Faith in Blue Week, which is October tenth through thirteenth. And we also attended a meeting, uh, with Downtown Smooptacular, which is scheduled for October thirtieth. That's all we have for the police department.
Any questions for the police department?
Okay, animal control, same reporting period, um, dog and cat intakes, a hundred and forty-three, forty-three intakes from the city, fifty-two from Chris County. And then forty-eight were other entities, uh, total calls, total of forty. Adoptions and rescues, forty-four adoptions, two rescues. Um, animals at the shelter at the time, thirty-two cats, nineteen dogs and fourteen were under six weeks, had a bunch of puppies. Uh, still do, actually. Uh, no citations issued, but there were eight warnings and there were some openings, still, uh, shelter space a- available. Uh, we're just pushing, basically adopt, don't shop, uh, adoptions have incre, I mean, adoptions have slowed, but intakes have continued to maintain, so we're just encouraging people, instead of, you know, shopping for a new dog, come down to the animal shelter and, and look and see what we have. Um, as far as dog and cat, uh, dog, excuse me, food donations, we continue to receive them and, uh, big thanks again to probation and tractor supply who continue to, uh, donate, so we appreciate that. And that's all I have for animal control.
All right, any questions for animal control?
All right. Seeing no questions, codes, roughly the same reporting period, abandoned vehicles, two. Construction and demolition, a total of two inspections, twelve. Uh, tampering utilities, uh, we had a total of two of those cases, um. As far as structures and unsafe, one, total violations that we cited were twenty, weed and junk, twenty-one, other were six. As far as departmental news and codes, uh, co-compliance officers assisted with two demolitions, basically they, uh, were part of that process. They didn't actually destroy anything, uh, just to be clear. Uh, code compliance officers also continue training, uh, in the framing and utility roughing. Basically what that is, is, uh, just making sure that the plumbing and electrical wiring are being put in properly and that they're following code with that. Um, obviously, it's a big project, so we're just making sure that their plans match with what they're doing. Uh, and then finally, co-compliance has two, uh, had two blighted property cases in municipal court, um, last month. And that's all I have. And then you see, as far as pending projects and everything, uh, everything continues to go. Uh, really nothing additional to report on that, but you have it there for you. That's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Any comments for the chief? Anything that the chief would like to share?
Well, as you all know, this is the chief's last presentation. He resigned his position last day is September twelfth. And so, um, we thank him for his dedication and service to the city of Cordeal.
Thank you. I will say, I have, um, a position with the state's attorney general's office in Atlanta.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, um. Chief, thank you for your service and stepping in and, um, seeing when we need you the most. Where it have you, thank you for accepting our, um, pleas and offer when the department was at its lowest. Um, and manning the ship in a good direction, you know. I often say, and this even considered, like, if I see paper on the road, um, when you go somewhere, leave something better than when you came. And I think you have definitely done that. Being a police chief is hard, being a police is hard, I understand, I have a lot of criticism all the time. It's just my frame and where I come from, it's for social work. Um, but that doesn't take away the fact that I understand how hard your job is, day in, day out. Where it have you, it's one of the hardest jobs you can probably have and you all don't get compensated fair enough. Um, I say that all the time as well. But I think, um, the police department and a lot their position, um, you were able to provide stabilization, um, before you came in, there was a lot of changes. Um, I believe the ten-year-old was about less than two years for a good little while there. And so, we just appreciate everything and wish you all the blessings in the world, um, you know, in different things. I love to have lunch with you, I still work in Atlanta from time to time. Not as much as I used to, but I love to have lunch with you and see how you're doing up there.
I'll be up there.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff, you're returning, and I see you had your phone on.
You did. It's not gonna change. I appreciate it.
That's a lot, too.
So much.
All right, um, couple of words, good morning to you. All right, you doing okay? Good, good, good.
Okay, first we have our cemetery and parks department, routine grass maintenance is ongoing. The department has completed eighty-five customer reported and routine maintenance work order for August. Um, our engineering department has completed eleven customer reported and routine maintenance work orders for August. Um, next we have our gas department, the Georgia Public Service Commission conducted three inspections on August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. The inspections included the distribution integrity management plan, dent, dent implementation and public awareness. No violations were found, the PSC is scheduled to return on September fifteenth to conduct the operation, operator qualification inspection. The gas department has completed forty-six customer reported and routine maintenance work orders. Next, we have our street department, the street department has been in several different locations clearing heavy debris from gutters that the sweeper is unable to remove. This requires using the backhoe and dump truck followed by the sweeper. The street department has completed forty-one customer reported and routine maintenance work orders. And last, we have our water department, the opera project, phase one, the contractor is prodding services and repairing street cuts. Phase two, the contractor began cleaning and TVing lines in the industrial park area around Thirteenth Avenue. And the water department has completed fifty-five customer reported and routine maintenance work orders for August. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Paul? You doing okay over there?
Yes, I'm, I'm good. Just a little nervous, but I'm good, I'm good.
Keep doing what you're doing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and this is social media and marketing.
Morning, Honorable Chairman, Commissioner, City Manager, Reddick, you have my report, uh, in your packet, just by addition of just a couple, two or three things very quickly. Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, reached out to Granicus for the steps that are needed to, uh, move the process forward in the website going live to the dot gov domain. Uh, received those steps same day, sent those on to Bobby and Brett and the interdev team, so the way has been cleared for that. And the go-live date is still set for October first. Upcoming September the eighth, I'll be working with, uh, Ms. Mary and the River Valley Regional Commission and others, uh, doing some production work for the Seventh Street Corridor Urban Development Project. A, uh, public hearing is coming up in September of this month on the twenty-second, I believe. And we'll be doing some promotional work for that. And then September the eleventh, I've been invited to, uh, attend a nine-eleven observance with the Chris County JROTC and Cordeal Fire Department, we're gonna have a busy day, there's several day, things going on that particular day, but that is early in the morning and I'll be attending that and some other things as well. So that is my report, that's what I have for you at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Smart? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
This is U C N T, Ms. Debbie, good morning to you.
Good morning. Um, you got my report in your packet, the gallons that you got are from July, I haven't had a chance to update them since it's the first of the month. We did get six point eight inches of rain the first part of the month, so our wastewater numbers are gonna be up significantly from what they were last month. Um, we had two vendors come in the last couple of weeks and look in our, our skates system and see how they could help us get up to speed since our stuff is all obsolete and we're now just waiting on quotes and prices. We'll have to get an electrician to install this stuff. So I just, I don't wanna jump the gun and say how much money it's gonna be, cause I just, I'm not sure. But it's something we've got to proceed with. And we were notified we're gonna get a water lab inspection from E P D. And that's never very nice, but, um, well, we've survived so far, but when I leave and retire, we won't be able to test for a lot of these little cities around here that we're testing for now because we don't have a microbiologist on staff. I begged and pleaded and asked for a waiver and they said they will not give one, so I don't know. I guess we'll just have to tell all those people, fend for yourself again. And I hate it because they all really appreciate what we do, because we do it in a timely way and they don't have to worry about shipping samples and them not getting there, and that's a big deal. You know, when you have to have something there and it's not there in thirty hours, then you could be in violation of permit. But anyway, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there.
Yeah.
And that's about all I have, unless y'all have some questions.
What do, what we need to do to actually get a microbiologist?
Uh, you'd have to advertise, you know, for someone with a microbiology degree from college.
And is there any way that, um, the service can be contracted at times, or do we, do that need to be a staff member?
Uh, we can still test our own samples, but we just can't test them for other cities that are permitted. I mean, there's no problem with us testing ours, and we can even test for, uh, realtors, 'cause we do that, too.
Right, right, okay. That's even the case, do we have someone, like I heard you say, um, if hopefully, not only, you retire? Do we, we, we still would be good?
Yeah, yeah, we're good with our stuff. It's just that these other little cities will have to find somebody else. And that's unfortunate, but I can't get anywhere with them.
And Chairman, if I can hand, I did ask Debbie about, uh, the service that is provided to other cities, and so, um, they pay thirty dollars a sample, correct? Takes about ten minutes, and right now, we're testing for seven to eight community.
And it's more around Christmas, because a lot of people know they can't get their samples there because of all the holiday shipping. Oh, that would tell ya.
But it's just the city, we would be, we're fine, it's just testing for other cities.
Right, yeah, we're fine with ours.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank y'all.
You're welcome. Alright. Good morning to you, Brett.
As part of your continuous improvement program, we continue to work on the Windows ten to eleven upgrades. Bobby has conducted eight replacements of devices, and he'll continue to do that until we've, uh, replaced all the devices we planned to replace. I think it'll line up to be a total of thirty-eight laptop, I'm sorry, desktops and one laptop. Uh, the second item, which I had the pleasure and opportunity to participate in Ms. Darby's Cordial GIS roadmap teams meeting she had with ESRI. It was very productive as she works to develop your GIS roadmap. Um, the next item, which is something that we've been really interested in for some time now, is the internet connectivity is now connected. We've tested it, and we will continue, Bobby has been testing throughout facilities to get a good picture of exactly what's going on. We, I think Rick tested nine fifty at his workstation, and there's different variables throughout, some people are on wifi, some people are direct connected. So, Bobby will continue to analyze that, but the good thing, in addition to having this speed, is we, we've continued to monitor what we call the health of all the computers and devices. And just that one thing, that internet speed improvement has improved the health of the devices by twenty percent. And we think that's due to the fact that updates can happen sooner, and then they're pushed out across the organization a lot faster. Also, the last thing, which I know you're keen on, is the Chris Power Fiber Termination, which will, which is then connected to this facility. And Bobby will today, um, finish the connectivity to bring up wastewater and the gas plant connectivity. That should be operational today. And, uh, we do, we have participated in the Granicus, I've reviewed the proposal and requirements from Granicus for the update for the dot gov domain rollout, and we see no issues with that. We have a timeline for that to take place, and I'm open for any questions.
Any questions? Pretty good, so, when you speak of the services, is the water treatment and animal shelter, is the internet service there, up there, or where we, does that go for those places as well?
Yes, sir, the connectivity that will, Bobby will activate today is for those two locations, not animal control. Now, that's something, once these connections are operational and tested today, then we'll have to make arrangements for animal control to be part of that connectivity.
So, you'll have to scale it later?
And it could be, Chairman, it could be, it's a direct connect fiber, it could be a wireless application for wastewater. It, it could be one of those two things, but we'll, we'll be back and discuss the opportunities for making those improvements.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our department head reports, um, as well. Perfect, alright. Now, this time, we're going to our specific agenda items. Item number one, consider an approved event permit for Chris County High School Homecoming Parade. Um, our chief had reviewed and recommended, um, do we have a motion in a second for agenda item number one? It's been properly moved a second that we consider an approved this permit, alright, open for discussion? Seeing no discussion, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Alright, agenda item is approved. Alright, agenda item number two, consider an approved permit for a tent reviving, alright? Uh, the chief has reviewed and recommended, do we have a motion in a second for agenda item number two?
So.
It's been properly moved a second that we consider an approved event permit, um, alright, open for discussion? Are they localized, I was just trying to?
I was trying to see, and also, um, the area, did they, did they get a lot of, of, uh, approval to use that lot, or?
They should have, I would confirm, because normally, if they don't have all of the paperwork, it's not submitted to the chief for review. So, I will follow up with Janice and confirm if they have that.
And those applications say a photo must be attached, for the organizer, do we have photos of anybody?
Normally, what we do, um, we don't include, like, their personal information photos, driver's license, phone numbers, all that, but we should have that information on file, we just don't send it out in the packet.
Okay, thank you, I wanna make sure. If you guys want to check my ID or something, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I confirm that as well.
Do we know if that is localized?
That's all, I'm just saying.
Is anyone in your family, you have the windows in your family, is that how your family is?
Not, I'm aware of.
Okay. I'm just curious, too, you know?
And the days, I'm seeing nine, so, the fifth through the fifteenth?
The fifteenth to fifteenth.
And, and one of them have a, a lower number, you know, two to nine, I mean, a, a.
Jay Nine, he has, has a lower number.
Just curious. Come out in your life, just watch your wound.
Oh, okay. Well, bringing tent revivals back, a long, long time, especially that long.
I'm saying, that's a long, big time. Hopefully, they'll be safe.
Yeah, we hope so, right? I hope so, uh, that's getting a long time, I see, tent revival for that one, but hey, you know, maybe it's time, maybe what we need. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, seeing no, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, it is approved, alright. Agenda item number three, consider an approved resolution for the City of Cordill Commission to provide insurance for tax anticipation note. Alright, do we have a motion in a second for agenda item number three?
Don't move, sir.
It's been properly moved a second that we consider an approved this item, alright, any discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, background, it's summary, uh, this resolution is requesting approval that if needed, um, the City of Cordill can, um, request a tan from local bank tax anticipation note. And of course, uh, there are three criteria, and City of Cordill, please answer that. Uh, you have to look at previous year's property taxes, the loss collected for the year, and one month's expense. And so, most cities will do this at the beginning of the year, because from August until about October, there is a decline in revenue. Uh, just based on, you know, we have not started, no, not alcohol license, business license, anything yet, and so, this resolution is if the need arises, it will allow the City of Cordill to, um, request, uh, and it will be like a line of credit, where you can draw down the amount as needed. Uh, if there's a need for it, and so, uh, again, based on the three criteria that I, um, mentioned, uh, if the request is made, it would not exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. And it's based on, you know, your income that's coming in in the last part of the year, um, and it has to be paid off if, if needed, then it has to be paid off, you know, by December thirty-first. It's not something you can roll over to the next year, so you have to be sure that you have income, revenue coming in, and so, um, did I miss anything?
No, thank you.
And, and even though it, you know, it's based on property taxes, of course, we have other revenue that comes in towards the end of the year, which is, uh, we have insurance premiums, and normally, that check comes in around the end of October, mid to late October. But this is if the need arises, because we are, things are getting tight.
Any further discussion?
And I would just say during this time period, uh, we've paid off, um, two debts, I remember, one was G four, I don't, I think the other one was in twenty-twelve or twenty, I think it was twenty-twelve series bonds. Those were paid off, and then, of course, we had to increase in, um, wages due to the compliance.
Any further discussion? Seeing no, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
I'm all say yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Alright. Um, motion carried, agenda item number three is approved, alright? Agenda item number four, consider an approved second reading of Orange authorized and directed to City Attorney to initiate judicial interim foreclosure, um, proceedings, uh, this is the second reading. Um, alright, do we have a motion in a second for agenda item number four? Properly moved a second that we consider an approved agenda item number four, alright, any discussion? Slowing the drive is more with emotion and sadness. Alright, seeing no discussion, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, agenda item number four is approved, motion carried, that brings us our city manager report.
Good morning again, uh, city manager's report for September second. I will start with upcoming events, uh, the Community Cafe, the next Community Cafe is scheduled for September eighth. Uh, at Clara Scott Holmes Community Center, located at two thirteen North Thirteenth Street, uh, at six o'clock PM. And so, uh, hopefully, uh, all can attend and enjoy the games, dinner, and then prizes. On September eleventh, we will have the faith-based organization ministers meeting at nine-thirty at the Community Clubhouse. As David mentioned in his report, uh, September fifteenth, uh, city employees are invited to a lunch and learn, so that they can understand, uh, retirement benefits. And that, uh, event will begin at twelve noon in the police department train. As mentioned before, um, the Seventh Street Corridor Urban Redevelopment Plan, uh, public meeting will be held on September twenty-second, that is a Monday, from six o'clock until seven-thirty PM. And also, on that date, um, the, uh, District Eight meeting will be held, GMA's District Eight meeting. Uh, Commissioner Shepherd is the president this year, I may say first vice president, but president this year, and so, that meeting will be held from eleven until one PM at the Community Clubhouse. And again, that is GMA, GMA's District Eight meeting. Additional upcoming meetings, the Community Clubhouse Coordination Board Meeting will be held on Monday, September eighth, at ten AM here in the courtroom. Uh, DEA meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September ninth, at the Main Street Office at eight-thirty AM. And then, a land bank meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September ninth, in the Power Commission Boardroom at one PM. A few city updates, uh, the dumpster location will be open, uh, this week, Thursday and Friday, from twelve noon to four PM. Uh, we do have a candidate that has been, or applicant that has been interviewed, and, and hopefully, that person will be coming on board, so that we can be open on weekends. Uh, but again, this week, Thursday and Friday, from twelve noon to four PM. Qualification for the municipal election in November for the at-large seat, Ward Two and Ward Three, was held August eighteenth through the twenty-second. Uh, we have seven individuals qualified for the at-large seat, five qualified for Ward Two, but one has since withdrew, uh, withdrawn from the race. And then, we have three who qualified for, uh, commission Ward Three. The deadline, uh, to register to vote in the November election is October sixth, by five o'clock PM. A few ongoing projects here at City Hall, uh, the front windows, uh, near the fountain will be replaced, and we have received a quote from Cordial Glass, so we can move forward with replacing those windows. Um, the drive-through window would not be replaced until, uh, the cabinet portion of the drive-through has been completed. And then, of course, uh, we had a vendor come out and look at, uh, the system that we have on top of City Hall, so hopefully, we'll be able to, um, have that repaired, so we won't have the buckets and cones on the stairs. And, and then, of course, uh, we had the mount posts painted, uh, here at City Hall in the front and the back, and there are other, others in the, uh, throughout the parking lot that needs to be addressed, and we will have those painted as well. So, just doing a little of keeping maintenance here at City Hall. Uh, just a reminder, we are entering the season for alcohol license renewals, those would go out this month. And just remember, alcohol license, uh, re-expires at the end of the year, December thirty-first at midnight. And alcohol license come before the city commission for approval, and so, make sure you turn those in early, because we have, um, until the last meeting in December to, uh, have those licenses approved. In terms of business license renewals, we're entering that season as well, so business licenses will, uh, be mailed out, uh, late October, early November. And, uh, those expire at the end of the year as well, but also, you have a grace period, if I remember correctly, it's until February first. But, uh, I would just like to point out a few things regarding the occupation tax. Um, as you can see, I've, uh, looked at other cities', uh, code of ordinances, because it's been said here in the City of Cordill, that we make this up in terms of issuing summons for individuals to appear in municipal court if they have not renewed their business license, uh, by April first. their business license, uh, by April first. And so I wanted to point out that this is something that was approved, and you can look there, City of Cordill, this ordinance was approved, ordinance was approved in December, actually December nineteenth, nineteen ninety-five. So this is not something that is new. This is something that should have been done, that was not being done. But it's being said that we made this, uh, we're doing this. Understand that as city manager, when ordinances and resolutions are passed by the city commission, these are the guidelines that we have to follow as a city manager. Um, and so basically, when all this started, I know, you know, um, it was said, well, we've never done this before. Well, this has been in place since nineteen ninety-five, so it's not something that we created. We are following legislation that was passed by a governing body in nineteen ninety-five. But also, just a few other cities, this is not unique to the City of Cordill. Because as a city, we provide services to businesses. And they should have a business license and pay for their business license. As a city, we have expenses, like if you're in your household, if you run a business, we have employees to pay, we have equipment to purchase. When you turn on the water, you expect for it to come on unless you haven't paid toward a bill. But other than that, you know, these are services that we provide. So if you look at the City of Ashburn, they have the same thing. If they don't pay by the deadline, they can summon violators of this article to appear in municipal court. Their ordinance was adopted in two thousand and three. City of Tisbon, same thing, appear in municipal court. Their ordinance was adopted in twenty seventeen. City of Warner Robins, because we're compared to Warner Robins a lot, same thing, violators appear in court. Their ordinance was adopted in nineteen ninety-four. So just want to, you know, provide information to show that what is being done is not something that was made up when this administration came into place. It is something that has been on the books for years. And of course, these are not hidden from sight. You can Google any city and Google that code of ordinances. And whatever you're looking for, you use the search, uh, area to, uh, type in what you're looking for, and it will come up. So just wanted to, uh, present that information so that, um, those who are saying that this is something that, um, you know, has never been done before, that that's a possibility if it has never been done before, but it's not something that was made up. It's, it's in, um, the City of Cordill code of ordinances. And other than that, you have my meetings and events for August twenty twenty-five, and that's all that I have.
Thank you. City manager, would you go back over to meetings for this month? I think I've missed some.
Um, September eighth is the, uh, clubhouse coordination board meeting. September ninth is, um, the land bank meeting.
Okay.
Uh, D E A meeting is at nine, I'm sorry, eight thirty eight M. on September ninth. And then GMA's, um, District Eight meeting is September twenty second at the community clubhouse.
Oh, September twenty second.
Yes, September twenty second.
What time is that meeting?
Eleven to one.
And that's a Monday, right?
Yes, Monday. And then that same night, we will have the public hearing for the Seventh Street Urban Redevelopment.
Okay. All right. What time is that public?
Six to seven thirty.
Six to seven thirty?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's the one I missed. I knew it was one. Um, I also do want to say, um, to the community, um, about making things up and, and that and reiterate. There was a lot of things when we came in that was not done, that should have been done. Uh, a lot of neglect in the community. Um, I want to say that we have not been wasteful with the taxpayers' money, believe it or not. We just had to cover a lot of neglect that had been, um, not done over the years. The city manager is a cautious person, sometimes too cautious for me. She is not going to, um, put us in a position where things don't need to be taken care of that we need to take care of. What I will say, in the spirit of everyone usually talking about coming together, if you don't understand something, ask questions, be curious. Um, I heard a couple of weeks ago, that's nothing better than an understanding. And sometimes we run off assumptions. If you don't want to like somebody, that's fine. But, you know, don't run off speculation and misinformation or what have you. We have had the toughest time dealing with lawsuits and different things. Uh, and we've, I think, we're not in the best place, but we're in a good place. Because we've been tending lawsuits left and right, but we've also been taking care of the, the city business, on the other hand. We have not dropped the ball. And, um, one of the most things we're proud of is actually paying our employees. That's a decision that I wouldn't go back on. Um, pay them right because it bothers me when I go other places and I see somebody working for the City of Cordill, having to work a second job, having to, or what have you. We can't do everything. It's hard to compete with private industries. It's just hard. Or what have you. Um, you know, the city usually ain't a profit-making place, or what have you, like businesses. But there's a lot of things that was on the books to be done that had not been done. And then there was a lot of things that were not done the correct and right way, or what have you. And, um, what we've tried to do is do it the right and correct way. And that takes time, that's, takes a slower process. Um, but at the end of the day, and I'll be confident to say, most of the time, anytime something arrives legally or ethical, we have been on the winning side. We have been not, it costs money for each one of those things. But most of the time, we have been on the winning side with all these issues because we have done what's legal, what's ethical, or what have you. Um, and, eh, but if you have questions, come to the source and get our understanding. Um, I think this administration has done a lot of things to make sure we're in a better place moving forward. And that's the best thing we can do, um, more than anything. Um, you know, we haven't always got along, but we have tried to do what's best and right by this city altogether. And so, again, if you have questions, if you have concerns, all numbers, you can reach us, you can reach the city manager, uh, call and get our understanding. We have to stop this fighting. And what I've been saying a long time now is come work with us. A lot of people have refused to work with us, uh, over these last four years. I don't dislike anybody enough not to do what's best for this city. But what I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna compromise on ethics or legality. I'm not gonna compromise what I believe what needs to be revived in this city. Us doing something a little bit different, but that doesn't mean I'm, I'm not willing to work with you. And I think the same goes for everyone up here, including the city manager. Um, but I understand that has been a lot of things, but at the end of the day, we got a lot of stuff to recover and do what we have decided to do, what other commissions even before us decided to do. Uh, so I appreciate you, city manager, for spreading things out as much as, as you can, but to the public, at the end of the day, that's what we've been doing the last four years. Find left and right with people that should be working with us and then doing what we're supposed to do based on the laws. And that don't look pretty all the time. That don't look pretty all the time, but it is necessary. So I thank you again. I appreciate, um, you for doing what you're doing over the last three, four years.
Chairman, uh, city manager, um, on the business licenses, um, do we have to change the ordinance to be able to send out additional notifications to the businesses? Because some of them misplaced the one notice we sent and just before the summons, or can we do, change a policy? Where like monthly, we could say you hadn't paid your business license?
And, and you all don't have to adopt the, uh, ordinance, you know, change that anything. We can just, um, make, you know, do that in-house, make sure we send out a reminder, uh, which normally try to do that. I understand, uh, I, I don't remember last year if it was done, but that was something we discussed is before, uh, that April first deadline. And I know the clerks, I, I do know they made some calls, but we will send out letters as well.
Okay, so we can just change the po, I don't have a problem going with the summons, but a lot of businesses just got the one notification, and then next notification they got was a summons.
We'll make sure we send that.
We had a mail center closed and some mail issues. And, so we can do that.
Yes.
And to be clear, the no, the ordinance we just approved for eight hundred thousand dollars, I term that as a cash flow issue for the next couple of months. So in other words, we're borrowing money because we are, don't have enough cash to possibly pay the bills for a little while.
Well, we can borrow, yeah, but if we need to.
If we need to.
Yes.
Call the top.
Right, but then again, um, with a ten, you're required to pay it by the end of the year, so it's nothing that will roll over to the next year. It's just, you know, during a slow season, if we need it, then it's available to us.
Okay.
And like I said, most cities normally, um, um, have it on the agenda, the first meeting in January is one of their housekeeping items, so you know, it's already in place, so if you need it, it's already been approved.
Is this gonna be something that we renew, say, the first of next year or comes?
No, if any, uh, I would have it on the agenda, so when we get to this time of year, if we need it, it's already in place, but no.
Okay.
And it's not that we have to take the whole amount that we just?
No, you can just draw down what is needed and you pay, you know, you, you, uh, interest is on the amount that is needed. Right. And, and the amount based on the three criterias that I named, the amount really is higher than eight hundred thousand dollars. But, uh, I'm conservative in terms of spending, so I told them, you know, I told them eight hundred thousand dollars. They were trying to get us to go hide. I told them no. Because it's, you know, as needed, and then, you know, then I know for certain this amount comes in, you know, they can take care of it, so, yeah, don't play games with money.
Any other questions for city manager?
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request a short executive session on litigation.
Litigation. Any other reason we need to run executive session? Okay, all right. Um, at this time, we entertain a motion for executive session for the purpose of litigation. Do I have a motion?
So.
Second? Um, it's been properly moved in the second that we're entering into executive session on the purpose of litigation at ten oh four A M.
We're on the same train with you, man.
Thirty-seven, all right.
Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So.
Second.
All right, about properly moved in the second that we come out of executive session at this time, the time I have. It's ten twenty-four. All right, all of everybody be known about voice call. All right, now we're considered back in regular session. All right, any other comments? Beans we need to handle before the city, before we adjourn? Seeing no, this time I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in the second that we're adjourned the meeting. All of everybody be known about voice call.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at ten twenty-four A M.